Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, December 18th, 2024. The Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting slash hearing of the Air Zoning Board of Appeals will be held in person at the location provided on the notice that was posted on December 13th. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with a particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom meeting ID 978-772-8220. Note new Zoom number. Or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Samantha Benoit at zba@air.ma.us or 978-772-8220, extension 114, prior to the meeting. First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda.
Make motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. The second item on the agenda is the Continued Public Hearing, Application for Special Permit, submitted by Swati Bindu Panda of 48 Apple Blossom Drive, which was filed on October 28th and was continued from November 20th. With Sam not being here, Marilyn, I'm going to ask you to participate in this.
All right.
This public hearing. Are the applicants present? Please come forward. Laura's yours.
So can I speak?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for taking the time to attend the meeting. My name is Swati Bindu Panda. We are proudly owned by Prayas K.K.'s Home Daycare and Learning located in 48 Apple Blossom Drive in Ayers, Massachusetts. We are licensed childcare provider under the Massachusetts Department of Early Education and Fair and registered as a small business in Commonwealth in Massachusetts. We are here today to respectfully request your support for special permit to operate our home daycare. And why this daycare matters to Ayers, affordable and essential childcare. Childcare cost in Massachusetts is like 24% of average families' income. Our daycare is provides a license and affordable option for families with children aged three months to six years old. With three full time, right now I have five kids, three full-time and two part-time kids. So we directly enable 10 working parents in Ayers to stay employed and contributing to the local economy. And high-quality early education. We follow easy strict guidelines in ensuring safe, nurturing care, and curriculum focused on fostering cognitive and social development. Educare giver with six years of experience in a reputed daycare center, I brings unmatched dedication expertise to our program. And positive economic and social impact. We resource materials and services locally, supporting nearby the businesses. As we grow, we aim to create like additional jobs, local jobs. And fourth one is minimal neighborhood impact. License for only six children, so we can have only six children, so we cannot have more than six children. Our strategy is pick-up and drop-ups. Schedules ensure minimal traffic and no disruption of our neighborhood. We are committed to collaborating with city officials, officials and neighbors to address any concern. So we schedule like eight to 10, eight AM to 10 AM to drop up the kids and then 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM to pick up the kids. And like three days a week, two, two parents pick up, I mean drop their kids like eight, between eight to eight thirty, eight forty-five. And other parents are like nine, sometime nine thirty like that. Whenever they need, like their schedule of work or something like that. And pick-up time also like one, two, one parent only come three forty-five around and others like four, four fifteen. And then two parents come like five o'clock, like three days a week. And four, two days I have only four kids. So like maybe one parent comes like eight fifteen, eight twenty around, like ten, eight thirty. So our request and commitment, we are here today to ask for your support in granting us a special permit for K.K.'s home daycare. This will be allow us to continue providing essential high-quality childcare for Ayers families while fostering community want and contributing to the local economy. We are committed to maintaining open communication with city officials and neighbors to ensure our daycare operates seamlessly within the community. So your support will make a significant difference, not just for our family, but for the families and children we serve. Thank you so much for the time and consideration. We welcome any questions you may.
Great. Thank you very much. So at this time, I'll open it up to any board questions. Go ahead, John.
So you've, you've actually opened up, what, since August?
Yes. Yeah. I mean, just in August, just one kid was coming, one baby's. I got licensed before that, but I didn't have any kids.
Do you have a, a permit from the town for the business to be operational in the town?
We registered in the city.
The business license?
Yes, the business license, yeah.
You do?
We do. We have.
Okay. Because I, I kind of looked, but I couldn't find it on the list, but I probably not looking at the list.
I have, yeah.
How many, how many people work there?
Just me.
So you, you take care of all six kids on your own?
Yeah. I can take only six kids, not more than that, yeah, just me.
But there's no employees?
No.
Marilyn, go, please.
I just want to make sure I understand the pick-up and drop-off schedule, because I know you were very clear in your proposal that it was a staggered. So you have six children?
Right now I have five.
Five?
Yeah, right now, yeah.
You have five and then two part-time?
Two part-time and three full-time, yeah.
Okay. So the full-time people, how many vehicles does that involve? Are they, are there siblings that you take care of?
No, just three kids coming. Three kids coming in three vehicle, like either mom and dad, one person dropped them off. So one person always like comes a little bit late, like nine, nine thirty, according to their schedule, parent's schedule, you know? And then two, two person comes around eight to eight forty-five around.
So between eight and eight forty-five, you have two cars going in and out?
Yes.
And then at nine, you have a third car?
Nine, nine thirty is means, see, they don't have like, the third one is not like every day same time, sometime nine, sometimes 10, like that, sometime 10:15, like that, yeah.
So that accounts for three of the five vehicles?
Full-time.
Okay. So you have three full times?
Yes.
Okay. And then the part-time people, do they, are they like that third person? They kind of come either nine or 10 or 10:30 or?
Yeah, they usually come like eight forty-fifty, sometime eight forty-five, like that. And then means, yeah, usually comes on that time. But I mean, I feel like two person, they need like eight, like mean, they need like, when I open eight to eight AM, so they need in that time, like eight to eight thirty in between.
So kind of like between eight and 10, that's, that's the drop-off time?
Yes, yeah. Between eight to 10, eight AM to 10 AM.
Okay. And then the pickup time?
Three PM, yeah, three PM to 5:00 PM. So three forty-five, like one person come, this most every day, like maybe one day or something, she has work or something, otherwise every like three forty-five around she comes. She's the first one that comes to pick up her child, that she's a full-timer.
Yep.
And other one like four to four thirty, two people come.
Okay.
And then two hours go exactly 5:00 PM.
And after five?
Yeah, exactly five, yeah, means, you know, maybe two minutes before five or something like that.
And how do you handle the pick-up and drop-off? Do they drive right, right up to your door?
Yes.
And then turn around in your driveway and leave?
Yes, they drive to my driveway, they park the car there, and then they go from my front door and then pick up their child. And then their responsibility, like they put their in the car and they just go.
They just back out of the drive and then turn around in the cul-de-sac?
Yes, yeah.
Do you ever see the bus when it's, well, you're inside with the kids, you would never know that. Okay. Okay. I was just wondering how the bus pick-up and drop-off intersects with your?
No, but means my child go to the, go by bus.
Oh, okay.
I know, yeah, eight fifteen to, I think, eight twenty with the bus.
That's when you get?
School bus, yeah.
That's when the pickup is?
Yeah, no, yeah, I mean, kid go home, goes, go to school from the bus stop. I used to drop him last year.
The bus doesn't go down the street?
No, but then bus don't come to my house.
Right, right.
Bus goes to the like street, like on the?
Very top of the street.
Yes, very top, yeah.
How many kids are usually waiting for the bus at that time? Have you ever noticed?
Maybe three, four kids. Means, I don't know now, because I cannot go out.
You're inside, yeah.
Last year, like four kids.
That's not a good question for you.
It's okay, no, you say, I can, I am here for answering everything.
All right, Jessica.
Okay. One of the things I noticed in your application was reference to if you expand it, you would need more people.
Yeah, but means, I mean, I know some, because before like, I mean, they, they give like, if home daycare, they give like up to 10 kids, but not right now, maybe years, my, after, means, maybe three, after two, three years. But I mean, I, I know like lots of some concern in the neighborhood or something, so I, I don't want to go for that, means, you know? Just wrote that before, but yeah, but yeah, I can have like six kids by myself or something, you know, if something, if I cannot do or something, or I'm sick or something happens, so I can just, it's some, hire someone, so she can take her, I, I don't have to close it, because parents need me every day, so I can just hire someone, so she can just take her with me.
But you could have as many as 10 kids for your, with your license. Am I understanding?
No, not right now. Like I have only six kids for right now, for three years, for three years, like I can have only six kids, I cannot have more than six kids. Even if I hired more people, I cannot have more than three, six kids, but yeah.
Now, when does that three-year window expire?
Twenty-seven January, yeah. But means, I'm, I'm not thinking like this, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just had a little?
Yeah, yes, yes.
So I still need for jobs?
Yes, yes, I'm, I mean?
That's good to know.
Yes, but I'm not thinking like go for more kids and stuff, because there was such concern, I don't want to like anyone concern and stuff like that, you know, so I, I don't.
If you were to do that, you could only hire one person? Because you, under the permit, you can only have one non-family member working in a home?
Yeah.
Business, okay.
Yeah. But also they have like lot of, like age limit, because if I have also eight kids, I can have more than six, only school-aged kids, five years old, like that, lot of like, you know? Yeah, there's a regulation for that, so I don't want to go for that, because I don't think like I can get like five-years-old kids. It's not easy to get five-years-old kids in.
So you got a, you got a letter from the zoning enforcement saying that you needed to apply for permit?
Special permit, yeah.
Yeah. So when you opened the business, you didn't know you needed that permit?
No.
And then when he contacted you, then you found out you had to do this?
Yes, I just called and come right up, like next day, I came here.
Okay.
I closed the center for a couple of hours and then I came here.
Ron, do you have any questions?
To make it clear, you're limited to six students?
Yes.
Your present license, could that be expanded? I think we sort of touched on that.
I don't, I don't know, I don't want to, because you know, this already, for six kids is already concerning, so I'm.
Not one or person.
I don't want any.
But theoretically, in January of 27, at that time, you could ask to go to 10 kids, right?
No, not 10 directly, they, they can have eight.
Okay. So what's the 10?
Maybe after a year or something, or they, they're going, means, if I can have, I mean, no, if I have eight, then only they can have 10, otherwise they cannot do directly six to 10. They can, they can, they're going to jump to six to eight first.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah. And then if I have eight, if I, you know, if I'm, I say, oh, I have this many kids or this and that, or if I want to do, and then only they can, but if I don't want to, they don't. Even if so, so many people have, they have license for 10 kids, but they don't have, they don't keep 10 kids, they, because, you know, sometimes easier, like, okay, work by yourself and just six kids, just work by yourself, yeah.
Right. Okay.
Your, your present operation involves, what, two vehicle trips each, drop-offs and pickups, two vehicle trips each? Or are you talking three vehicles? I thought I heard two.
Hmm, three.
You know, total amount of vehicles that come into your establishment over the?
I have five kids right now, so five vehicles coming, picking, dropping off in the morning and picking up in the afternoon. So like eight to nine, two vehicles coming, they are full-time, they, they drop their kids, and then one kid is come late, like nine thirty, ten like that, nine, nine forty-five sometimes.
So it involves two vehicles?
Yes.
Each morning and evening?
Just two? Five vehicles?
Five. But they're, they're staggered?
So 10 trips altogether?
Ten vehicle trips, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and the only, you're only, you've got a very tight lot, and we, I don't know if we can, can we show that one?
I can show that.
So your vehicle drop-off here, you say it's, it's right at the front door?
Yes, like they go to our driveway, they park the car in our driveway and go to the front door.
This is your driveway?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, and they, so each car parks at your front door, there's no, no other room there?
No, they're the driveway, like the, all, all the way they're driving.
Personal cars are on the driveway at all, they don't disappear?
No, they were, they are inside the, my garage.
Okay, so this is the garage, I can't correct it all?
Yes, yeah, means it's not, I cannot see like properly that.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, and I did not visit the site, I was just looking at the area.
Yes. And my front door is like this way, this, this is the front door. They park the here and then they come, walk to the front door and drop their kids.
You see, front door?
Yes, yes, yes.
This side?
Yes.
This side?
Yeah, I mean, but, yeah.
Yeah, this, this lot is certainly unique, because it's got that shared driveway, right? Which, you know, is different than a lot of the Pingree Hill neighborhood.
Yeah, it's kind of a cul-de-sac off a cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
But it does split off into three distinct driveways.
Yep. Yep. All right. Any other questions from the board right now? So, that being the case, I am going to open it up to public comment. I think we have some residents who'd like to speak to that. So if you just want to take a seat briefly, we'll take public comment, and after that, you'll have a chance to, you know, make a rebuttal or make any comments?
Yeah, thank you so much.
On those residents' comments. As you come up, when you take a seat, just say your name and your address for the record.
Mandy Bresnahan, 24 Apple Blossom Drive.
And I'm James Bresnahan, 24 Apple Blossom Drive.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So thank you for your time this evening. I'm a resident of the Pingree Hill neighborhood and live on Apple Blossom Drive. I have concerns regarding the proposed special permit for a family daycare at 48 Apple Blossom Drive. While I recognize the importance of offering daycare solutions for families, I have two children myself, I have concerns around a few topics. Traffic and safety on my street and in my neighborhood, the impact this special permit will have on the residential character of my street and neighborhood, and the precedent granting this special permit could introduce. We purchased our home on Apple Blossom Drive in March of 2016. The fact that Apple Blossom Drive is a cul-de-sac road and would not have through traffic was a main factor in our decision. Another major factor in our decision is the structure of our neighborhood. It's mostly contained to the residents. There's not a lot of through traffic that comes through our neighborhood just because. The location of the daycare at the end of Apple Blossom Drive has increased traffic driving throughout the neighborhood. It's not only just down Apple Blossom Drive, it's down multiple roads. And this is happening every weekday. Many of these vehicles are coming and going at the time of the bus coming. As I stated before, I do have two other children, and there's other children on the street. There are five children that are at the bus stop in the morning, but that's just my bus stop. So these vehicles are actually driving throughout the neighborhood, they're driving by multiple bus stops at that time. So kids are walking to the bus, and this time it's elementary school children, so that's a major concern of mine. And some of these vehicles are not driving very slowly. As you can imagine, they're in a rush to get to work and they are, this is not their neighborhood, they are flying through sometimes. I won't say that's everybody, but there are definitely vehicles I have seen while standing at the bus stop. During holidays and school breaks, my children, amongst other children in the neighborhood, are often outside playing, riding their bikes. And throughout the day, we have lots of walkers, runners, bikers in our neighborhood, and having the additional traffic is a major concern for me. In the air zoning bylaws, it states no traffic shall be generated by the home occupation in greater volume than would normally be expected in a residential neighborhood. From what I've witnessed over the last few months, there is absolutely greater volume than normally would be expected, and especially on my cul-de-sac road. Pingree Hill also has a homeowners association, and within our homeowners association documents, there is a declaration of protective covenants, and they state under the use of premises section that the premises shall not be used for business, professional, or industrial purposes. In no event shall the premises be used for any purpose which might be or become a detriment to the neighborhood as a desirable residential area. This facility goes against these covenants that were meant to preserve the residential character of my neighborhood.
Well, just, just for the record, that's, that's up to them to address, that's not, that's not for this board to consider.
That's okay, I just want to make the board aware that this is something that is part of our homeowners association.
That is not, that's not part of our decision. The homeowners association is responsible for doing whatever it is they do to enforce their rules. We have no jurisdiction there.
Okay. I have concerns regarding oversight and control while the applicant may be complying with state regulations for a licensed family daycare. I have concerns about the level of oversight and potential for growth beyond the original scope, which was discussed earlier tonight. In their application, it states that supporting the local economy through home daycare section, that the daycare could expand if demand grows, and it may become necessary to hire additional staff, such as caregivers, assistants, or administrative help. And this would be above and beyond the original scope of the permit, and I have concerns about how this would be monitored and controlled. Lastly, granting a special permit for a family daycare, I fear will set a precedent for other special permits, special permit requests within Pingree Hill. In March 2017, this board denied a special permit for a hair salon in our neighborhood, and the concerns expressed at that time of the meeting were traffic and public safety concerns, as well as the worry of setting a precedent in our neighborhood. So these are the same concerns related to this current application. The residential zoning of our neighborhood was designed to provide a quality of life, a certain quality of life, and I believe introducing a daycare alters the character of this area. Ultimately, I believe the adverse effects of the proposed permit outweigh the benefits to the neighborhood, and granting this special permit would go against, I know the declaration of covenants is not your jurisdiction, but I'm mentioning it anyways, and goes against the precedent set by this board in 20, March 2017. So I thank you for your time for my concerns, and I trust that you will take these considerations into consideration as you make your decision.
Absolutely. So just, just for clarity's sake, none of the decisions we make as a board are precedent-setting, right? Each application is heard on an individual basis, so we could say yes to somebody building a deck in their backyard, and at the next meeting say no to a nearly identical plan. So I, the point is taken, but just so you're aware that?
Okay.
None of our decisions set precedent. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Little question for them. Where is your property, which?
You actually can't see it on this image?
You kind of need to zoom out, if you, but it's, it's near the top of that circle.
Okay.
There's only three houses on each side, so it's kind of shorter screen as well. But you, if you were to see it, then you would also see the other streets that cars would also have to travel to get to the house.
So it's all of Apple Blossom? So where the second lot on the right-hand side, where it says 3669.
So you're observing the traffic going in and out of?
Yep.
219.
And the bus stop is towards the top?
At the top of 3670. That's one bus stop. I just want to remind everyone that there are multiple bus stops.
How many vehicle trips have we, six vehicle trips?
Ten, total.
Per day, ten total for five per?
Correct. Each kid has their own car.
So that, and, and you can't see where staggering those trips is being done or would help that situation?
I can only comment that there are cars coming while I am waiting at the bus stop with my children, and they're coming when my kids are getting off the bus. There are, there is a car that comes a little bit later in the morning. I mean, I'm working, so I'm not, I, my, I do face the street, so I do see the cars coming and going. And like I said, I've witnessed cars like take the corner of my street very quickly, they've been behind the bus, like.
And it could just be walking to the bus stop as well. It's not necessarily standing on sidewalk, it could just be walking down as well.
But, but can you ascribe all that traffic that you described to the activity that's going on?
Yes, I can, because I know there's very limited houses on my street, and I know whose, whose cars belong to whom.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is a sidewalk on that street?
It is on the other side of the street, it's not on my side of the street.
All right, it's only on one side.
And the bus stop is actually across the street once you get to the end of the road. So all of the children are crossing over.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Gamash, I reside at 9 Apple Blossom Drive, so on the map on the screen, I'm at the top-left parcel at the corner. I'm here tonight to voice my concerns regarding the daycare on our small street. I have three concerns that I'd like to review, they're a little bit repetitive to what Mandy said, but I understand it's not in your purview, but it is in our HOA agreement that we are not allowed to have businesses within our homes, and approving this proposal would disregard the established guidelines that we've all agreed to, living in this neighborhood. I have two concerns with the proposal that was attached to the application tonight. As part of the application, there's the daycare's operational model to expand and provide additional staff. I'm concerned that approving the daycare tonight will allow for further expansion later and set a dangerous precedent within our neighborhood. It's been discussed, there's, there's five kids at the bus stop and three parents at that time, and we've seen three cars, I would say typically in that window of standing at the bus stop for about five minutes. And like Mandy said, you can tell who the cars are, because of the 10 homes, three parents are standing there with the children. I think it's also important to note and to understand where Apple Blossom Drive is within the neighborhood, we're sort of central, so you can enter the neighborhood from 2A or from Snake Hill Road at Sandy Pond, and regardless of where you enter, I would estimate you're passing five or six bus stops at that time. My other concern with the proposal is that it doesn't address the unique challenges of our neighborhood, of our street, or of this house in particular, along the shared driveway. While it does highlight the understanding of traffic concern? Um, while it does highlight the understanding of traffic concerns, it does so generically without any detail. I believe this was a template that wasn't fully filled out, there's bracketed information that says like fill-in daycare name, it's not filled out. For me, that's a concern because I don't think it highlights the understanding that the neighbors have um, for the concern with this daycare within the neighborhood. And then finally cul-de-sacs are designed to provide a safe, low-traffic environment, which is the key reason that I and many others chose to live here. Adding the daycare fundamentally alters the character, introducing traffic that's incompatible with the quiet residential nature of our street. I do believe that there's better locations for a daycare that could accommodate the traffic such as through streets. Um, and properties with larger parking and capacity, not a shared driveway off the end of a ten-home cul-de-sac. I strongly believe um, that we need to maintain the safety, integrity, and residential character of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Howdy.
Uh, my name is Kelly Bly, I actually live at one oh-three Olds Farm Way, so um, my street is not even on that map. Um, but I will say I have a fifth grader at Page Hill Top and his bus stop is affected by the daycare. Once we found out that that's why the increased traffic was happening, um, my eleven-year-old decided to take a traffic report and he was counting upwards of five cars, only because it was affecting his football catch in the middle of the street. Um, so she does report that there's staggered times, but we are counting upwards of five cars. So my um, son is at a bus stop with seven children. Because of the way Pingree is, you have to have a collective stop. So if you can see the pool on that map where it says thirty-six one thirty-six, that's actually the corner where our bus stop is, so right, right where the mouse is. Um, so there's seven children at that stop. And there's upwards of five cars passing while they're waiting for the bus between eight and eight fifteen. Without saying ditto to everything else that everybody else said, I have the same feelings.
Are there sidewalks on your street there, or do they have to stand in the street?
So there is a side, yes, there is a sidewalk on that corner right where the mouse is, but with seven kids, they're not standing on the sidewalk waiting.
Yeah, you mentioned they play football, so
Yeah.
Your kids are kind of used to playing in the street because it's so quiet?
Yes, there's typically no cars, I mean, there is like obviously people commuting to work, but prior to this, there was barely any cars. Because of the way, you can go both directions to come in and out of the neighborhood. That even if you lived on my street, you potentially could go left and you wouldn't be affected by our bus stop. So with all seven kids, they're not standing on the sidewalk patiently waiting for the bus stop by any means.
All right.
Thank you.
Come back up. All right. All right. So, before we jump in, there's just a couple things that I want to address. And I wish Danny had been here tonight just so he could confirm this, but he had um, he had something going on. Um, so what's unique about this is it's a special permit. Special permits per the bylaws are shall grant, provided that I'll just read it out. "Special permits shall be granted by the special permit granting authority only upon its written determination that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the town or the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and the proposal in relation to that site. In addition to any specific factors that may be set forth elsewhere in this bylaw, the determination shall include consideration of each of the following," and there are six. "Number one, social, economic, or community needs which are served by this proposal. Number two, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. Three, adequacy of utilities and other public services. Four, neighborhood character and social structures. Five, impacts on the natural environment. And six, potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment." So those are the six things that we do have to consider. When, you know, voting whether or not to grant a special permit. I will say that the decision from twenty seventeen for the hair salon, personally, I think was the worst decision we've ever made. I think that was, that was a case of a special permit that should have been granted. But with a
It was a three, two, one.
Yeah, but this decision was made.
Yes.
Uh-huh, yes.
And just so be it. But that being said, the, the neighbors have brought up concerns that I think we do need to address as we consider these six things. But before we do that, you've heard the concerns of your neighbors and they're right on your street. You know, the big one, I think, was traffic and safety, which, you know, as a parent is my primary concern as well, you know? If a special permit were to be granted, personally, I'd want to see constraints put on it. Not limited to drop-off and pickup times, in addition to an expiration date. Because, you know, that January twenty twenty-seven date when this has to be reap, I think reapplied for with the state, right?
Yes, yes.
You know, that would be the furthest out I'd be willing to go, because it is something that, this is a neighborhood where, you know, there are five kids at the end of that street. And I'd be concerned too, if people were coming in especially quickly.
Yeah.
You know, I understand people are trying to get to work.
Mm-hmm.
But we do have commercial parcels in town. But that's, that's just my, my thoughts before we get into reviewing this. That being said, do you want to address some of the concerns?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
And it means, uh, I said before like they're, uh, like the traffic is we told them, um, this, this is the drop-off time and it's the pickup time. And they, we all adult, you know, they also know, and we're going to also tell them, this is the, they all know, we already told them. This is like speed limit twenty or something because this is a senior area. And uh, they all, they all have kids, obviously, they know, yeah, they all have kids, they are dropping their kids to my home. And they know, they are not, they're all adult, they are not kid, they are just not driving like something. And we are going to tell them again, like drive very slowly and cautiously because these kids are there. And I mean, I have one, one thing to say. If I have six kids by myself, what I'm going to do, if they're all are adult. If, if I have my six kids by myself in my home, they're going to go, right? If they're in college, they're going to go to college, if they're going to go to high school, they, they have their own car, they're going to have their own car. So how it's like, is there any restriction to like have only this limited cars only coming to their house? Or coming to my house or anybody else's house like that?
So that, you know, I, I see, I take your point, right?
Mm-hmm.
My dad is one of ten.
Yep.
The, the Gibbons family house, there were eight cars in the driveway at all times. But it, you also have to recognize that's different, those are your family members, this is a for-profit home business.
Yeah, and I'm, yeah.
There's a reason
Yes.
Have the special permit process.
Yes, yeah, I know.
Because that's, it, it's unique, it's not the same as having
Yeah.
Six children with six cars.
Yes.
So I take your point, but I'm not sure that it's as relevant, because if you had six children with six cars, you wouldn't need
I mean, I have five kids, five kids right now, man. And um, like I have one concern, like uh, we share some road with our two neighbors. Uh, we asked them because we thought we should ask them because we share some road. And they said, no, we don't have, they don't have any problem. Only one of the, the house, I mean, the, the lady, she's pregnant, so she's very happy, oh, it's very good. Some of even never, they say, oh, this is good, like, you know, it's very relevant, very uh, it's very good, like just, just go and like the house, different house, and we need that. And I don't know, like we already told, I mean, we are going to tell them, the parents, all the parents, like or, or is any, any alternative I can do, like, or means, I can, we can avoid the, that's boss time, like dropping time, the kids. If they're never who are continuing about the dropping the kids' time, so we can avoid tho- those time. I can like operate, I can start like eight-thirty or something, so this can be avoided, so no cars coming or something like that in, on that time. If, if possible.
Okay. Yeah, and so that, that is one of the things that if, if a special permit would be granted.
Yeah.
You know, I would definitely, that's something that I'd want to restrict is
Yeah.
Pick-up and drop-off time.
Yes, is there any alternative we can, we can do or I can do?
Okay. Anybody else with questions or concerns? We, we will, I just wanted, does anybody else have questions for the applicant?
What, what are the, um, this might be for the neighborhood too, what are the bus pickup and drop-off times?
Seven one in the morning, eight fifteen per elementary school.
So seven and eight fifteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Seven oh-six and eight eleven are the two bus times that my children are on that corner?
Uh, I think it's the eight fifteen time, the pickup time, I mean, when all the kids could come from home. I mean, six, eight fifteen time, the one school bus is coming that night.
Elementary school.
The only time when school bus is coming.
The afternoon, the bus comes from the elementary school between three forty-five and four. And we're in the center of the neighborhood, so it's, you have to add like ten minutes to either end for the, if you want to capture everybody.
All right, uh, any other questions or the applicant at this point? Okay. If you wouldn't mind taking a seat, we're just gonna deliberate amongst ourselves now. All right, so like I said, uh, we have six things to consider as we decide whether or not to grant the special permit. I think we should go through, go through them one by one. And uh, I'll take comments on all of them if you have them. All right, so number one, the social, economic, or community needs which are served by the proposal. I mean, I think it's a clear one, community and social needs.
I don't know, you could put under that umbrella. I know we don't have any jurisdiction over the, the homeowners agreement, but the property owners do apparently have some kind of agreement. And that should enter into our consideration, the nature of the community.
They're, they're, they're self-policing, that, that's their association, it's not associated to our bylaw.
But we should consider, consider it as an impact on the neighborhood.
But I do have a question, if in the homeowners association, there is a clear statement that you cannot do business with this professional office or something like that. But in the end, there is clearly stated that you can run a home sale office, okay? So how you are going to define the business to, what kind of business you are running though? Or what kind of business you cannot run in your own? So I think there is no clear legal statement about that, whether you can, you know, run a business in your own or not. So if you go into the business, or pay, register or the documents, it clearly said that. You cannot run, you cannot run a business, but you can run a home sale office or the business, something like that. If you have to define the type of business you are going to run, run in that neighborhood, then you can decide and means like, whether it's home daycare or what kind of business it is. So you have to decide before, you know, considering whether or not you're doing that.
Daycare isn't a sales office though, so it's different.
I think the sales office was meant for the, the homeowners that you could comment, pick up your
If you, um, just run this sales office in my home, giving, say, five or seven person that come into my office and going back to their home, what is the same kind of, same
And, and again, frankly, that's why I think we don't consider the homeowners association. I tend to agree with John that it's self-policing. If they were granted a special permit and it's against their homeowners association?
Enforcement versus the, you know, obviously we don't have any, have anything on enforcement. But we do consider the facts that certain neighborhoods do have certain characteristics that might have originally been been at least in the minds of the, the residents there, still exist. Unfortunately, we don't have that agreement, we have to take the applicant's word for it, that's, so so I guess we can't consider it.
I, I just came to know, like before some days, a lot of people do like home office, okay? People come, they, they do have meetings, people come to their house. I'm not going to, I'm not counting how many people coming to their house, how many cars coming to their house. At the, in the weekend, in our neighborhood, in the some houses, I'm not, lot of, sometimes lot of noises, sometimes like ten cars on the road. I'm not, I'm not saying that is concerning, but I want to part of the neighborhood, never, okay? And I'm, drop, even if the dogs coming through my property and pooping and going, I, I'm not doing, I'm, I'm not going to the camera and doing and searching who's going to poop in my, in my, that's my, that's my land, okay? That's, I bought it, I'm not doing that.
I, I understand.
Close this for deliberations?
Yes, I would like to close it for deliberation, so.
Next point. You going down?
I am, I think just to, as we're deliberating here, the only thing, I, one of the things I asked um, Sam for was if there were any other businesses in the Pingree Hill neighborhood, because I think, you know, that makes some difference. We did get a list, or I got a list, it's got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Nine or ten?
Nine or ten, roughly businesses. Some of them, I think are probably pretty clearly just folks who are operating a home office. But some of them I could see as have
Could establish, it's a fact.
And
There are some.
These are, the list I have, and I have other copies if anyone wants it, are businesses that have business certificates with the town clerk's office. If you do not submit a business certificate, we do not necessarily know if there's a business, there are not. And the town clerk's the one who maintains this list. If there are others, I, I don't know for sure. Um, when a business certificate is applied for, it is sent to the building department for zoning review. If Charlie determines it doesn't need to come to you guys, it just goes back to them. There was also a period of time in which certificates were not coming to the building department. So there's a handful of years in which some may have snuck through that we don't know about.
But, I mean, the argument could be made that those businesses obviously don't generate enough traffic to have been brought up, right? Where this one, this one did, so.
Factor of just having a business shouldn't be, shouldn't be a fact. How long, how long is it that a permit gets issued and then reviewed? Is it two years or something they have to?
For the business certificate?
Or for, for the permits?
Like the special permits?
Yes.
Um, if you guys put a deadline on it, then they'll have to be reviewed.
So they're not, they're not re- re- reviewed at any point in time, it's just existing?
It's just existing unless you put a deadline on it and then it would have to be reviewed. Um, I've, it's a project of trying to find out who's
We have done that, we did that.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, one you did last year that you did that for.
So we've, we've closed it to deliberate at this point. Thank you. All right, uh, so, as the five-member board. Number one, social, economic, or community needs which are served by the proposal. Do we think these, the beneficial impacts of the social, economic, or community needs which are served by the proposal outweigh the detriment? I'll, I'll go first, I think they do, the social
I would agree.
And community needs piece.
For affordable hot, childcare, yes.
Yeah. Okay. So four or five on that one.
It sounds like there's a lot of children in the neighborhood, so
Yeah.
I mean, it could be a service for a neighbor, possibly.
It's community as a whole, yeah.
All right, so number two, traffic flow and safety, including parking and unload, and loading.
That's the big one.
This is a big one, I agree. You know, I, I do think ten trips on a cul-de-sac with a shared driveway is a lot. If we were to grant a special permit tonight, I would want to enforce some sort of pickup and drop-off time.
Staggering?
Well, I, I don't know how, frankly, being honest, I don't know how we can enforce a stagger drop-off, right? We could say it, but you know, I, I think we'd be better served to put We could say it, but, you know, I, I think we'd be better served to put some sort of window in place.
Those times could change as the kids go from elementary to, to junior high and high school.
Well, but in junior, higher, high school, they're not going to be in daycare.
No, but I'm talking about the buses in the neighborhood.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I'm saying? We can't really.
New families could move in who have young kids.
Exactly, so you can't really.
All of that.
You can't really pinpoint what time that's gonna happen, 'cause it's, it's flexible.
So, of these six items, I think number two, again, my thoughts on it, you know, I'll call that one detrimental. It's just my thoughts, but I'm open to hearing everybody else's.
It isn't beneficial.
Sure.
So I'm detrimental.
Do we, do we think?
This is tough making this.
It is, it is.
Quantifying these things and weighting them, that's a big deal. Easy ones are, could just check those out.
And we will eventually get to some of those that I agree, but there are a few on here that, you know.
There's, there's three or four that just really don't apply.
Yeah, but, and this is why, again, I wish Danny were here, because, you know, we've had discussions in the past about our special permit, you know, the best way to grant these, it was my understanding that there are six items. If we find, I'll, I'll call it positively on four, we should grant. We don't, or we find negatively for four of them, we should not. You know, special permits are also unique in that it's shall grant versus may grant. But regardless.
As you were trying to, as, um, the discussion you had of these different factors there. If some don't apply, then, you know, you're not going to, you know, if only two apply, and they're, and they're fifty percent on one and not, or.
But that's the danger of weighing them though.
Yeah.
Right?
But if they don't apply, then they, there's no fact, you know.
Yeah, I know. It's, it's tough, again, that's why I wish Danny was here.
I'd share your.
I, I couldn't make it last meeting, and he was here, so. Alright, so again, for number two, what's everybody's thoughts?
Do you wanna go first?
Um, I can see, you know, if you look at the main road there, above the cul-de-sac where most of the bus pickups seem to happen. They have sidewalks and they obviously have very responsible parents that seem to wait with the children. Um, and to me, five cars in a, from eight to ten? Doesn't seem like an excessive amount of traffic to me. The cul-de-sac would be a different matter. That, I think, is, is where the rub comes. They need to go down the cul-de-sac to reach the house safely, so it has to be involved in this decision. I mean, and it's obviously a very quiet neighborhood. I mean, the children are used to playing in the streets, so there would have to be some behavioral adjustments. On top of that, you have the HOA thing that says it, it probably shouldn't happen, but that's not.
Yeah.
That's not part of what we're involved in. This just adds a, maybe a recourse, if, depending on our decision, whichever way it goes. I can understand why they're upset on the cul-de-sac, 'cause it would be a big change. If we limit the size of the daycare and we make sure that the spacing, they're not dropping them all off at eight, eight fifteen when the bus is coming through. I wouldn't find this as detrimental.
Okay. Jess, what are your thoughts?
Um, living on a, in another neighborhood that is a dead end, on a dead end, a dead end. We've got new building coming in that's gonna increase the traffic quite a bit. There's a lot of concern there. Unfortunately, air is growing. And adjustments need to be made all over the place. I would consider five to six cars in a two hours time span, not an overwhelming detriment, especially because there are sidewalks. And, but I would be in favor of the constraint that this is not to grow beyond up to six children at this location. Any expansion would have to be done elsewhere.
John, what do you think?
Well, that's, I, I pretty much agree with that. Um, and as far as the expansion goes, we do need to include that because it's eligible in a couple of years, but it's not gonna come back before us in a couple of years for expansion.
Certainly could make it.
Because that's just growth.
True, but we could condition.
That's what I'm saying. So I'm saying we should condition it to a, a maximum of six.
Alright, and Ron, final thoughts on that one?
Review period? Would there, would this be subject to review period? Is that, is that any kind of thought on that?
Now, what do you mean if, if it were?
Um, you know, to, alright, so this, the, for these types of, of, um, permits, for lack of a word. Are they in perpetuity with the, with the, the owner, or can they be reviewed, or is there any kind of automatic review? I don't.
Yes.
Well.
That's what I, that's what you were just talking about. It is.
Well, I, I think I know what you're saying. Are you saying specify a review without the, the expiration of the special permit? So are you saying if granted tonight, for two years, in, one year from now, someone reviews? Yeah. I don't know that we can, and it, it might. I, I don't know if we can. It may overcomplicate it, but. Alright, dope. For that one, for the first one, I put four of five, seemed positive. For the second one, I've put three of five. Number three, adequacy of utilities and other public services, I, I don't think.
See, that's one I think there's no effect.
No, we should. I mean, there, that, there is public services. It's, it's a publicly accepted road, correct? Yes. Neighborhood character and social structures, number four.
That's probably more you, you consider the homeowners agreements under that, so there's some concern about that.
I agree. You know, in terms of the character, I'll grant that this is a different business, right? Because we have people coming to the home on a regular basis, where I do have a list of about nine other businesses, home businesses with certificates from the town clerk's office, that are in the Pingree Hill neighborhood. But I can't tell you that I know how many people come and go from these homes every day. I won't even speculate, but. But they do exist. Which, if this becomes an issue with the HOA, we can, like, Sam can certainly forward this to you. I don't know. I mean, I would've said home businesses might be unique to the neighborhood, but I have nine examples of why it's not a one-off, first-time, first-time thing. What do you think, Merrill?
Yeah, I'm kind of agreeing. I think, you know, there are other home businesses.
And this particular home business does serve a real need. I know the neighborhood character is an issue with it being a cul-de-sac. You know, I, I think if it wasn't a cul-de-sac, this probably wouldn't be really much of an issue, but, I think when you have to weigh the, the benefit that the daycare is giving to the overall community versus the change in the traffic pattern on the, this particular cul-de-sac, mine tends to lean more in favor of the daycare. But again, I, I would do it with conditions. Limit the size, um, and make sure that the pick up and drop off times are specified. We can't.
No, I don't think that's.
We can't say.
I don't think you can, can do the, the, the time thing.
Yeah.
Because the bus times change, everything else changes. And I just don't think that, I don't really think that's a good thing for us to get involved with doing that time thing.
There also are emergencies.
And there's half-days, I mean, there's all kinds of stuff. And I just, I just don't think it, it's a fit for this.
What about, uh, last pick up time, right? Like, my daughter's daycare has that where you can't come after, I think, six o'clock. Because, you know, I, my proposal had been to put some restrictions on pick up and drop off time, but I can see your point. But I don't think it's fair to have people coming to pick up their kids at seven o'clock at night, when.
Well, she, she has posted hours, she has operating hours, and, and that, it, to be stipulated that, that, that it will close at those hours. You know, you can, you can stipulate the operating hours, so that then they really can't be coming in at seven thirty. You know, saying, well, I gotta work late, can you, can the kids stay? No.
Okay.
And if you need the, no pickups after six to enforce that, then that's fine.
Yeah, okay. So, again, my thoughts on the four, the character, because there are other businesses, I can't say that this is a, an overstep or a one-off. It, it's, there are other businesses in this neighborhood. So I, I don't think the detriment outweighs the benefit in this case. That's my thought on it. But I'd like to get everybody's thoughts.
I agree with that too.
What do you think, Ron?
As far as that's concerned?
Yeah. Yeah, okay. I mean, the next one, number five, impacts on the natural environment. You know, I assume if there ever became any issues, cons, the conservation agent would be on it, but that, frankly, that's.
Just right here.
Yeah, I know.
But there's no wetlands nearby.
So that's, that's.
We don't have jurisdiction.
High and dry.
No impact on that one. And the last one is potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment. I don't think this is a big one, because I wouldn't be in favor of allowing additional employees, but.
Right, at the same time, there's also the comment that Swati made of, um, town residents who can continue to work in their jobs because they have childcare.
Right, right. I mean, both my kids go to daycare right now. It is essential to my continuing to, to work, so. But in terms of the fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base, and, and, and employment, I, I don't really want to see any of their employees work at this establishment, so I think that's.
There's a limit to one anyway, even if they did.
So, I, I think that one's fine. So I'm just looking at it, and as I wrote it, again, we have more positive than we do negative in this case. Because of the way the bylaw's written, I do think that means we, we have to grant a special permit. In granting a special permit, we do have the ability to put constraints on it. And at least the one, one of the ones that I propose is, uh, at expiration, right, for review, because, you know, I, I do think this is something that should be looked at.
So when we do that?
Yep.
Does that mean they have to come back before the board and?
Correct.
At the end of that?
That would be the responsibility of the applicant. And so if a special permit were granted tonight with any kind of expiration on it, say for example, January twenty twenty-seven, it would be your responsibility to apply for, uh, uh, the special permit to be renewed ahead of that. And if you came on January first, your special permit is expired, it's no good, start the process from step one and, if granted, please don't do that.
So Sam? If, there's a, there's a fee charge for applying for a special permit, would it be the same fee charge to apply for renewal?
We have a flat fee for hearings. I haven't had a renewal since I've been hired, so I'm not quite sure how that's handled. Um, I'll ask, I can ask Carly. But I would imagine if, if we were, you know, you were to renew it and you wanted a full public hearing again, then it would be the hearing charge.
Do, do you keep a record of the ones that you say you have a two-year limit?
I have been keeping a record.
Okay, so then you will see someone come for a renewal.
Some point, um, but I, I only know the expiration since I started, so any hearings that you did prior to me, I haven't.
Okay, but you do, you do note, you do note that?
Yes, I have a note.
Alright, so that being said, what, what's everybody's thoughts on this? Do we, do I have a motion? Either way, do you have any concerns that you'd want noted if a special permit were to be granted that you want?
Conditions, right?
Yes, conditions.
Again, to review that, the, the number of, of, uh, students or client, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, students, we'll call them students.
Babies aren't students.
But still.
Children.
Yeah.
Yes, we have a maximum of six.
Yeah, I've been favored by that.
Maximum of six and then a two-year time?
And a two-year.
And the fixed relative, the, the drop off pick up windows?
Yes.
And you don't think we can do?
I don't, I, I really don't think that that's appropriate, but that's just me. If you, if you're all gonna vote it, then you can vote it, but I, I'm not in support of it.
Okay.
Be hard to enforce.
And, yes.
Would it really? I mean, you have the whole date. I mean, if somebody has to come back early or a little late, you know. I mean, the more spread out they are, the better, but these are the brackets, like, the business will be covered, colored, covered between these times, you know, especially in a residential neighborhood.
Could we set like not before a particular time and not after a particular time?
The business hours?
Sure. I mean, we, we could, in their application, they, the drop, pick up and drop off times. Zone will be reserved for daycare use. This is the traffic management proposal. Essentially, drop off time is eight AM to ten AM. Pickup time is three PM to five PM. With staggered timing, traffic flow will be evenly distributed. Again, I don't know how you could reasonably.
You can just say per the application, the drop off, pick up will be in accordance with the application, uh, stated times on the application.
Moving it to after eight thirty would make a difference.
Noted. Would you be, is that amenable? Sure. Um, would eight thirty to ten work for drop off time?
Yes, I'll talk to my.
Okay, because what we're potentially proposing are conditions as part of the issuance of the special permit. And if issued, these are conditions, so that you, you have to stick to them, so that's why I ask. Okay, thank you.
Doable? No, I'll just request them to do that.
Yes. Okay. How about an expiration date?
What about your drop off times? You did the pickup, what's the drop off?
Uh, drop off was eight thirty. Right now in the application, it's three to five PM. I don't wanna go later than five PM.
I thought you were upgrading hours for till six. Is that wrong?
No, eight AM to five PM.
Okay. So then you could make it like five thirty, in case somebody's fifteen minutes late.
What are we interest, if, is there any interest in setting an expiration?
Um, I think for this first special permit, it would be good to review it in the two years. When, when the licensing has to be renewed.
Makes sense.
Consideration of all of these things, all of these special permits.
I agree.
Because seeing some things expand, some things remain as they are. And they're, or they wither away.
As long as we have a SAM person, also, it should be something that we track them.
Yes, indeed.
Yeah, we can't rely on.
Right.
Something like this.
And and sort of the way that I'm looking at, that I look at these when we go through them. We had a gentleman up on Jonathan Drive or somewhere, somewhere up by Tiny's, I think. And he wanted to put a commercial truck on his lot to operate some sort of landscaping. And we conditioned him, again, with an expiration date. My hope is that anybody who operates a home business like this can expand to the point where their home cannot contain them. You have to go to a commercial site.
Yeah.
That would be great, but, you know, I I I don't wanna see ten students, at least. As we're setting this up right now, I think the max of six is good. Pickup and drop off times of eight thirty to ten AM and three PM to five PM for pickup.
Five thirty.
Five thirty PM, yeah.
Because, I mean, somebody's gonna run late and somebody's gonna complain.
Traffic. No.
And I'd note that we, uh, the special permit would be set to expire, I just did twelve thirty one twenty six. Right?
Yeah, okay.
Amenable?
Because at that point, she has to reapply for the license anyway, at that point.
January of twenty seven, and that's, that's sort of what.
But that, that does not, that's her license, that does not affect the permit.
No, that's right.
Okay.
But I mean, the timing is good. Because that's about the time she'd make a decision.
Because I I think one of the things, again, where we're limiting it to six students in twenty, in January, January of twenty seven, she may try to go for ten. Which I, again, we would seriously have to discuss, so I think that's a good expiration date. Any other conditions that anybody's interested in enforcing at this point?
Would I?
All right, that being the case, I'll entertain a motion or I'll make it and someone can move it. What would, what would you guys like?
Uh, I can make a motion if you like.
John, let me give you what I've written for conditions. All right, right at the bottom there.
Well, I'm just gonna say as, as, uh, conditions as discussed. Or do you need to list them specifically?
I'd like to list them.
They need to be listed. They need to be listed out.
All right.
You want me to make it?
All right, give it back to him. Okay. So I make a motion to approve a special permit, forty eight Apple Blossom Drive. For zoning by law five point two, point one, point one one. To allow for a family daycare home as defined in section two point two. With the following conditions, to be a max of six students. And with a pickup time, uh, uh, pickup and drop. Pickup would be eight thirty to ten AM, drop off time, three to five thirty PM. This bit permit will expire around twelve thirty one twenty twenty six.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Pickup and drop off, yeah. Uh, I'll amend it to note that the drop off time is eight thirty to ten and the pickup time is three to five thirty PM. You you just had it switched. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, John. Thank you very much. So Sam, you'll be in touch.
I will call you tomorrow. Okay?
Thank you, folks.
Go through this laborious.
I don't think we do, that's.
Only enough.
So I watched the meeting.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing for forty eight Apple Blossom.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so I I don't, Sam, just to be clear, we don't have to find. Variances?
Um, finding effects are actually for everybody.
All right, then I'm gonna do the finding effects right now.
Okay, but we've closed it.
That's okay.
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 Because the hearing, the hearing itself.
For the record.
But this is for the record.
Okay.
So I can write it.
Ah, here we go. I find that uh the applicant of forty eight Apple Blossom Drive is in the A one zoning district. I suppose I'll just go through the consideration. Found that the social, economic, and community needs which are served by the proposal were largely positive. We found that the impact of the traffic flow and safety, including the majority, um, majority positive. Uh, we found that unanimously there were adequate utilities and public services. We did not, uh, we unanimously found that the detriment to the neighborhood character and social structures. Did not outweigh the beneficial impacts to the town. We found that there is no impact on the natural environment. And we found that uh there were no potential fiscal impacts on town services, the tax base, or employment. Thank you. Well, actually. I guess let's move through when we get to board discussion. Next item on the agenda.
The minutes of November twentieth, twenty twenty four.
I was not here, so I will not be here. But I did watch the recording on YouTube and.
It was a brilliant lead.
It was. He noted the leadership, that's what I saw, I said, boy, that, that person, none of that, he did a great job.
I protest.
Oh, boy, so do we have any issues with that?
Nope. Although they, it did lack.
Six ten, I should say six ten. Or I dropped that zero.
I like the, I like the extra zeros on the end.
That's usually off guard and you don't know you're gonna chair.
Yeah.
But you didn't have that magnificent part.
I know.
Okay, so we do have to do that, take a vote on.
Yeah.
And John, did you have an amendment to these?
Yeah.
No, just a typo.
Take a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes for uh November twentieth, twenty twenty four with one correction.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I abstain, I wasn't here. Uh, our board discussion, so before we jump into the bulleted items, one of the things I just wanted to say is, as we were going through that. You probably saw me flipping back and forth. I am trying, as I chair some meetings, to stick to our rules and regs and and the way that we're here.
Well, the one thing that was different is, and and this board has always had the issue, is for the public input. The public input, they should all defer to it before we have our discussions. And 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 that's what happened tonight, too, as you said, any thoughts, you know, our thoughts should have gone to them first.
The only reason I did that is because that's how we currently have it set up in our rules and regs.
No, no, I don't think so.
One thing I would say when we move into the deliberative pause, that we don't take any comments at that point from the public. Because what we wanna avoid is we start doing back and forth.
Yes, yes.
You're totally right.
Yeah. That was starting.
Yes, yeah, we could burn.
We've had meetings where that's gone.
Yeah.
And it's like hearing a present, a presentation, two or three.
Because the essential thing is.
You guys ask questions first and then.
Have we heard everything we need to hear?
Yes, but this is where we question the applicant, not each other. This is, this is where the board may question and ask the clarification from the applicant. And the applicant responds. And then the abutters.
Yep.
Before it comes to us.
Well, for deliberation, yes.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
But you guys can.
That sort of.
You guys can discuss a little, like, when you're asking them questions, if you wanna confer what kind of question or, that's okay. You're allowed to talk to each other.
Yeah, I thought we did do that, because we did.
No, but when she, but when she was all done.
Yeah.
Then he turned to us, he says, well, any thoughts on the board? Well, it should have gone to the abutters before it comes to any thoughts on the board, because that's the way it's written.
See, I I'm reading it differently, I think. So when she presented, when I said any, I may have said any thoughts on the board, I should have said any thoughts from the board for the applicant.
Any questions or, yeah, that kind of.
I probably didn't.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I, that was my intention, it didn't come across that way.
But then, but then we kinda got into discussions.
Yeah, I agree.
And I hate to do that because I hate forming opinions until I've heard everybody. You know, I I don't wanna be swayed by stuff going on when it should be them, them, and then us.
Yeah, especially in these cases, these are tough applications.
Yeah, because I like all the input.
Yeah.
Before I make any kind of.
And we're keeping poker faces.
All right. Yeah, so that's some point.
But I will say, having these, you know, I wasn't.
Yeah.
Totally expecting to chair tonight, so having these to kinda go back to helped me a ton, to just lean on it. Applicants rebuttal. So it is nice to have that. Accessory dwelling units, I assume Danny will give us an update in January?
Yeah, he'll give us an update, I did send you all what is currently, this, what I sent you is the draft from Danny. It's the protected use accessory dwelling units, this is the draft. Rules for the state. Um, and kinda how it's gonna work at this point is, because of the draft rules, this is whatever town has to work with. And then the town gets to make their own little rules if we wanted to. So it might not be a special permit anymore, but it's still, you know, Charlie might have an extra step or. And the town can decide, Charlie, Danny, and the powers that be are still discussing on how that would work.
I I've, I've looked into it a little bit, and the state put out a webinar last week and I think they were. Interesting, I guess, but it it's odd because, you know, they're saying final guidelines by February second or something, or February eighth, whatever it is. Which is the day the law comes into effect.
Yes, it's kind of.
It it's not leaving communities, especially, like, we have an ADU law on the books, you know, so the fact that it's gonna potentially.
It might override, and and we are gonna end up with like a weird flux period because if, say, it overrides our bylaw. Well, we have to either change or get rid of our bylaw, but we can't do that until April. So the newer law will be in effect, and there'll be like this weird period of time, um, hopefully not much happens.
That's gonna be.
No, not much happens, um, but I know Charlie and Danny, and there's like a working group, they're trying to figure out, like.
Yeah.
How do we wanna handle this?
Yeah.
Are there any inconsistencies between our current bylaw and this?
So our current bylaw, uh, there's a few changes, I think size is, like, the size of units and a few other things. Like minor changes like that, but the biggest change is that currently.
Right.
The occupant, yeah, owner, our say must be owner occupied. And the other major change is that we require a special permit from you guys. And the law doesn't necessarily require that, so it might change, it might not, I don't.
Yeah, I can't tell if it's by right or not.
That's hence the.
Tried.
Hence the many discussions.
Yeah.
So, um, Danny was going, he just couldn't make it tonight, something came up, and then um there is no resolution at this.
I mean, at this point, we've only seen one so far, and if it does turn out that a lot of these aren't gonna be coming for special permits, even if Danny comes.
Yeah.
February, assuming we won't have.
Yeah.
All right, meeting scheduled for twenty twenty five?
Yes. Yes.
Did you see my note that I would not?
It'd be January fifteenth.
Yes, January fifteenth. You need extras.
The cataract surgeries.
For both of us?
Oh, two and two.
So no exceptions from the third Wednesday of the month?
No, at this point in time, we are free and clear for the whole year.
Okay, but it's just easier to remember.
It's always the third.
Make sure.
It's always the third unless.
Not an exceptional month.
Unless it doesn't. Doesn't fall on anybody's birthday or anything, right?
Had reason to call.
And then I, I also.
We got an alternate, so if anybody.
Um, I also included with it the filing deadlines that I have, so this is so I can get in the newspaper. If I don't hear anything.
Now, will you publish that on the town website if?
It's already up there.
All right.
Love it.
I spent a, I spent like a six hour day doing all your meetings, the Florida Health meetings, and everyone else's postings. And the planning board.
Thanks.
But this is the one that matters.
I know. A long day. I hit the end, I was like, oh, what have I done?
Do we have any applications for January?
Uh, we do not.
So can you, you know, if we're gonna start doing some review period special permits, can you check to see what are? If, you, because I'd hate to see somebody just come in to renew unproblematically, but have to pay as if they were starting.
Okay, yeah, I can ask about.
Versus not.
Yeah, it it might not require a full hearing, it might just be a general.
Yeah.
I'll ask Carly, she'll know.
Or could we set an intermediate?
Yeah.
Um, do you remember last time I mentioned that house on Sandy Pond Road that maybe?
Oh, the little one in the front?
Yeah, that's thirty seven Sandy Pond Road.
I remember, I saw the video, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, it looks like the front house is occupied, when we drove by, there were lights on. The back house is also occupied and it are, so they came to us initially for a variance for the frontage. And then they came back to us in, on eleven sixteen twenty twenty two for a variance. So that they didn't have to take down that front house while they were building, because they wanted to use it.
Right.
For utilities. And we had lengthy discussions on that.
So the map hasn't been updated, I can't.
Yeah, so the, so the important part is the eleven sixteen twenty twenty two minutes.
Okay.
And Mike, among others.
I was concerned about it, I think, wasn't I?
Concerned about we'd wind up with two houses on the one lot.
I understand.
And it was supposed to, they weren't supposed to be issued an occupancy permit, that was the failsafe. No occupancy permit until the house was raised.
You gonna bring that up on the screen, those houses?
Yeah, that's what I'm doing, unfortunately.
Yeah, because I brought that up once before and they said, no, that little house out by the street wasn't part of that.
Yeah, that's part of it.
They said, no, that wasn't part of the two house deal.
I thought it wasn't, so I was probably the one who said that.
Well, they they subdivided the lot. So it was lot one and lot two, and then lot two was where the only thing we were considering for the variance on the frontage. And then Charlie at that meeting was saying, yeah, you can't, you can't build until you've taken that down. And then they came back for a variance because they wanted to use that utility hook up.
Unfortunately.
So the other lot was a whole separate lot one that wasn't.
So this, this is what I.
It is, I I'm, because then we also had the the duplex next to it.
Yeah, and the duplex is like in it.
That's Canard, right? Not something.
I thought it was for some reason as well.
There's two duplexes that are Canard.
Okay.
He's on Marshall?
No, he's, he's on Sandy Pond, so unfortunately I can't get it on the screen. No, he's he's on Sandy Pond, so unfortunately I can't get it on the screen. Come on, wake up, wake up. Yeah.
So be it.
Um, but I do have it here. Oh, there it goes. There it is.
You wrecked your magic.
So this, the one in blue is thirty seven Sandy Pond.
Updated with the new house that was constructed?
Believe so, the the, um, so this, both of these are thirty seven Sandy Pond, which is very confusing.
Was that before the subdivision of the lot?
So they subdivided this one off.
Right.
And that one's staying, this one's, and then the other one is being built here.
So the shotgun house.
Shotgun house is a totally different property now. The shotgun house stays, this one.
With the two duplexes?
These, these two empty lots right here will be duplexes.
Yep, they already got the foundation.
Yeah, they got foundations in.
So the little crazy house goes with them.
This, no, this little skinny house goes with this one. The one outlined, this is thirty seven Sandy Pond. And I believe the new house is built back here.
Yeah, it is, so it should be down.
This one is not coming down or?
No, that one is, that's a totally different building, and that one should be.
Okay, so we were looking at the lot.
Yeah, I think I was too.
Yeah. I can double check tomorrow if they have the occupancy, but I am pretty sure I mailed that out.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
And Charlie was kind of on top of that, yeah.
They say they had demolition permit.
Yeah, they do have one.
Yeah, so that, that one that's right there on the street.
Yes.
Is staying.
Yes, because they cut that, there was actually three houses on one property, and then they canard that off and.
Yeah, because that's what I brought up last time, is that that little house is still there, and say, oh, yeah, it's a different piece of property now.
It is, so, um, so this is thirty seven Sandy Pond, this is thirty seven, I think, A through C, I think there's three apartments in there.
Yeah, you think they'd rename, renumber that stuff?
You can't, because this one is thirty three, and this is thirty five, and this one's thirty one, you can't. There there's no, there's no numbers.
We're not going decimals?
Yeah, we can't, there's a few spots in town that did.
What, point five?
Yep, there's a couple of point fives.
So that little place is staying. Because they made it its own little.
Yep, it's its own thing.
Planning board did that.
I was going to say, that's kind of a weird lot, isn't it?
It predates zoning, so they can just.
Yeah, it's, they have two primary structures.
Yeah.
Chapter eighty one L.
But that one did come down. But I can double check, but I'm ninety nine percent sure.
I I could have sworn it was that little one.
Yeah, that, I made that mistake a couple of months ago.
That was two years ago.
That was, yeah.
Yeah, that was, I think it was like my second meeting with you guys.
You started in twenty twenty two.
Did, my first meeting was the forty B.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah. Well, I think you started, you started with us for the the second time they came to us, but you weren't for the first time.
Okay. Alright.
Oh, you had the forty B.
Yeah.
Oy, and you stuck around?
Now you love us.
Yes, I do.
Alright, I don't have anything else, does anybody else?
Do you have anything for next time? Um, if not, just let me know, we'll throw it on the agenda.
Are we ever going to discuss accessory units, or are we going to wait till February?
Well, if wait, there's no, there's nothing, no rules yet, so.
Okay, so we'll, and we'll hopefully get an update from Danny or Charlie.
Yeah.
On that.
Want to get sorted out?
And I know they've been going to the presentations and stuff, so.
Did we close the meeting?
Uh, we have not.
Nope.
Take a motion to adjourn?
Motion, so moved, whatever.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?